The order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, August the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And welcome, we have all of our council members here. We have majority of our staff and directors here with us. We're missing our city administrator this night. We excuse him, but our general counsel, Tina Peterson, has said he's taken his responsibility this evening. Our first item on our work session this night is the introduction of new employees.
Mayor and council, we have two new Public Works employees, and they met the first qualification when they walked through the door, and that was to have facial hair.
And a hat.
Well, and a hat. I mean, that goes without saying. And as you recall, I was expecting Jordan here last meeting, but as fate would have it, he was fulfilling his duties in the water group, and he was on a water leak. And instead of coming here and talking to you guys, he made the way better choice of staying up on the water leak and helping out the team get wrapped up for the night. We've had a lot of water leaks recently, so he's jumped in and really helped out. So I'm just gonna let both of them introduce themselves and let you guys have at it with them. Glad to have both of them here. Bodie's only been here a few days, and Jordan, a little bit different. So Bodie, why don't you jump in here and let them know who you are and what you're gonna have for dinner later tonight? And, you know, what's your plans are for Labor Day?
Where are you from? That kind of stuff?
I'm Bodie Maynard. Been in construction ever since high school, after high school. Done everything between concrete, landscaping, heavy equipment, truck driving, electrical, you name it. I've done a little bit of everything.
Where did you grow up?
I grew up in Pleasant Grove.
Ah, very nice.
Okay, well, that's the, he passed the first three then.
Yeah.
I'm sure you guys know my grandpa, Ron Christensen, Christensen Truck Sales.
Oh, jeez.
My grandma Cheryl Christensen.
Grandma Cheryl.
Yep, that's my grandma, so.
Wait, so who do you come from?
Jana was my mom.
Jana.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
He passed the four.
Yeah.
And do you live here now?
I live in Lehigh now. Sorry.
That's okay. You can't be perfect.
Okay, minus one.
Yeah.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Jana.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all you guys need?
That's all we need.
Cheryl, oh my gosh.
Well, my name is Jordan. I've been here for about two and a half months, and then just got full time three weeks ago, and then grew up in Lehigh, so minus a point.
He's probably got web feet.
Did you date anyone from Pleasant Grove?
No, no, I did not. I married someone from American Fork, if that helps. No? All right. It's closer.
You've chosen a good career. Let's just stay right there.
Yeah, until. But yeah, so I was doing warehouse work for fourteen years, and then the job I was at went under, and now we're here.
Okay.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's everybody, I think, is all we had for the night for new employees, so we'll move on to our, and have Deon present the Eagle Scout project recognition here. This is a, we don't have many of these anymore, so this is a big, this is a big thing here.
Wow.
Yeah, mayor and council, introduce Cameron Boulon. One thing I love about this kid is he always has a smile, always, and it's pretty, pretty awesome to see. He did a couple bike stations on Valley Vista. He is the sixth.
Does that mean bike station, Deon?
I'll let him explain it. The sixth, you're the sixth one, right? So he is the sixth Boulon son to complete an Eagle project for Pleasant Grove City. All his brothers completed projects for us, so.
And is this the last one?
He's the, he's the baby, so anyway, I'm gonna turn it over to Cameron and let him explain his project.
Mm-hmm. Well, for my Eagle project, I built two bike repair stations on the mountain bike trails on the edge of Pleasant Grove. I talked to the city to get this project. They were, you guys were happy that I would take it over for you guys. I met with Deon to learn the details and plan for the project. In that meeting, we set a date to go up to the sites and choose the exact spot of where the bike stations would be. I was given a general location of where they wanted, where they wanted the bike stations to go, but I got to choose the exact, so I can have a little bit more leadership for my Eagle. I went up with Deon and marked out the sites with paint. The next step in our process was I would choose all the materials for the project, and I would have you guys come and go and get all the materials for me, and then I could use them for the project. We, once we got the materials, we got, we used the wood that we had requested for two wooden forms for the concrete the bike stations would be sitting on. Once the forms we built, we got some of the, our amazing volunteers to come and help me set forms and pour concretes into both sites. We did this all in one Saturday, and we had both sites, and we were there pretty much most of the day, up from, I think, nine until around four o'clock. For the first bike station, we had more volunteers come up and help us build it up there and set it into the concrete with drills and things. And then for the second one, we had, my dad had the amazing idea to build it at our house, and then we could, we could have a city representative take it up, and we could just put it in the cement, which turned out to be a great idea for us, and I'm glad that I was able to help you guys.
Okay, well, thank you. And we'll have you come, why don't you come forward here? I've got a, thank for to give to you, and we'd like to get a picture with you, the council behind you.
So how many, how many total hours was your project?
Um, okay. Good work?
Good work? Great project.
Yeah, when you were putting the money.
Let's come in here a little closer, council. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Good job. Congratulations.
Hold on, really quick, Cameron, Cameron, what made you decide to do this project? Do you bike up there a lot?
I, I like biking. I recently got hit on a bike.
Oh.
Hit by a car, but that.
Oh, no.
That's fine. I've been wanting to get into mountain biking, though. It does seem fun to me, and I think I know a lot of my friends bike too, so I wanted to help them.
Okay. And I think your mom had mentioned that Deon told her you're the only Eagle Scout so far in two thousand and twenty-five to have completed a project for the city?
Yep.
That's awesome. I know it's a little bit of a program that's, you know, going away, so that's awesome that you kept with it, and you and your brothers completed that, so well done.
I was the last Eagle for my troop, so.
Oh, really?
We recently, well, we just broke up, so.
Uh-huh. Well, good for you.
Well done.
What was your, I have one last question. What was your most challenging merit badge?
Swimming. I don't like swimming.
Okay.
It's like, it's like he's in a board review.
Right?
We've done a couple of those. Great. Congratulations. Good work.
Thank you. Okay, well, let me move to our next item here, and it's our update on our Utopia Fiber. So if you wanna come in, we'll get you, come up, we'll get you plugged in and.
Greatest decision we ever made.
Hey, well, he just gave the presentation. That was, that was the conclusion right there.
When we overtake Linden.
Well, I'm hoping he gives us a good update on that one.
All right. Hey, it worked. Awesome. I love it when it works. Well, thanks for having me come provide an update. Does anybody remember when we made this decision to do Utopia?
Sure do.
I remember when it was first brought up, I think, in thirteen, fourteen?
Maybe.
Yeah, there were some really early meetings, and there was a lot of, no, we don't wanna do it right now. I was in some of those, but the council that did actually make the decision, that was early two thousand and twenty-one.
Yep.
Let me jump into a couple of things, just give you a little summary history here. We had the original cities. That was good. We appreciate and love our founding cities, but, you know, there was some, some difficulty there. When we figured things out, started building networks really well, and have finished all those cities, there was an opportunity for other cities to join. So you see, you're in the list of these, these partner cities, kind of in the middle. We keep adding some. In fact, maybe you're a little, one of the older partner cities, because we keep adding new partnerships. But yeah, you guys came in on the timeline around two thousand and twenty-one. The red was kind of that original phase, but since two thousand and nine, all of our projects have been successful, and we'll talk about what it looks like, what that means in the city. A couple accomplishments that we're very proud of at Utopia is that we're the largest open access network, and we're now the largest municipal network in the country. We're up over two hundred and sixty thousand locations now, twenty-three citywide projects. We're the fastest speeds in the country. It's debatable. I mean, we can do twenty-five gig, we can do a hundred gig to homes if we really wanted to. I mean, the beauty of fiber is it has that capacity. But what we offer generally to people is ten gig and two and a half and gig, and, you know, there's lower tiers, of course. And then a hundred gig for businesses, and technically, we do more than that. We have the university system on four hundred gig, so University of Utah and their connections. We're the most competitive system in the whole country, so when you get Utopia, you get nineteen options, it's all competing for your business. So you have those plus Comcast and whoever else you have in the city. That's more competition than anywhere else in the country. It's very cool. We love competition and choice. Over the last number of years, we've been number one in getting new connections from the university, or sorry, the Utah Education Network. So we connect lots of schools. So this isn't just about homes. This is businesses, schools, government needs. We connect everything we can, and we've been winning that business. Well, when we win that business, it's also saving them money. We win because we have a really good price. So not only are we saving residents and businesses and the city money, but we're saving the schools' money, and that's very important to us. We're the number one, we do a lot of smart city stuff that's kind of cool, and one of those things is that we're number one in air quality data. So as you look up like the KSL weather app for air quality or a lot of these other ones, you may notice that there's more sensors in Pleasant Grove than, say, some neighbor cities like American Fork and Lehigh. Well, and every time when we deploy our networks, we install air quality sensors at every single one of our fiber huts, and those are, the data is shared into these networks of systems that collect that and display it. So you can almost figure out which cities are Utopia cities by where, you know, who has a lot of air quality data. We do other cool stuff. I'm gonna show you a little demonstration of wildfire detection system, because there was a little wildfire that people were concerned about recently. We do Wi-Fi systems, a lot of other cool things. We like to work with our cities to see what their needs are and see if we can't help. We have a net promoter score of top in the state. That's a customer satisfaction score. It's a pretty good score. We always were like, oh, we need to make that seventy or eighty, but compared to like what was here before, which were in the negatives, it's been a dramatic increase, so I think people are pretty happy.
That's pretty good, yeah.
Google rating score is pretty good, four point six stars, you know, anytime we don't, we get something other than a five, we, we look at that and try to fix it, and we care about every single customer and every single review. But that's a really good score, too. In fact, it's better than Google. You know, I just love throwing that out there. Google Fiber, I guess. And a couple of other things. All right, we'll skip on here. So you have this fiber network, it's open access, and that allows all these private companies to come in. Sometimes we get criticized, you know, you hear at the legislature, they'll be like, we don't like these municipal fiber networks, because they're, you know, they compete with the private sector, and we're like, no, it's exactly the opposite. Like, these are Utah-based companies, for the most part, some of them are regional or nationals even, that are here in your city offering service because we invested in this infrastructure, right? We are pro-private sector, we love these companies, we want them to make money and be successful, but also keep them honest, and that's, it happens when they're, they have to be competitive, rather than keep everybody else out and raise their rates and have bad service, which is kind of what it was before, which is why we do so well. Another point to make here is that, is the architecture of the network. I'm kind of a geek, so I love this part of it, but we build our network to the very highest standard. Every connection is dedicated, so if your neighbor is a bandwidth hog, and they're gamer, or they're downloading tons of stuff, it does not impact your connection. That is not the case on other fiber networks, whether that's Google or Lumen, or even some of the municipal systems like Lehigh, those are shared systems. Ours is a dedicated system. It does cost a little bit more to do that, not a lot more, but it is future-proof, larger capacity, and more reliable. You have the top-tier system in the, in the country, really. And we love Lehigh, even though they didn't go with us on their partnership, so. That was a mutual decision to not partner with them. Anyways, a couple points here, you know, what is the economic benefit to Pleasant Grove by doing this? You know, as we look at whether options that are similar, it's about a hundred and nine bucks for something that's close to the gigabit option, that's kind of the middle of the road. We have a lot of people getting two and a half gig, and more people picking ten gig now, but most people are at that gigabit tier. You're twenty-nine dollars cheaper on Utopia generally than you would be without Utopia. And so we have two thousand seven hundred and ninety subscribers residential in the city. If you say you're saving twenty-nine dollars a month, we're saving the residents of Pleasant Grove nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year by having this in place. And how much has the city paid for this? Nothing. Absolutely nothing. Like, this is amazing, right? The businesses have, they save a good amount, too. We average that at about fifty dollars of savings per business, and so we've got two hundred and ninety-six business connections in the city. And they're really like non-residential, some of them are government, some of them are schools, whatever. That's a lot. That's, you know, over a million dollars of just money in the pockets of your residents and businesses in the city that, that has saved every year because this exists. That's huge. There was a survey, or a study done on the Chattanooga Fiber Network, which is a pretty big one. It's a, depending on how you count it, they're the largest in the country, or we are, there's kind of different ways to look at it. But in their study, they kind of looked at all the things that happened between saving money and driving economic development and driving investment, all these different things, and they came out and said, hey, this is the, this is all those things added together. We look at that and size that, say, you know, it's really similar in how we do this. And based on that over a ten-year period, they had like, this is the benefit, economic benefit to the community. If we sized that to Pleasant Grove, it would be two hundred and forty-three million dollars of economic benefit to the city over a ten-year period. And people are like, that's a crazy number, but we invite you to see the link, you know, I'll share this, and you can go look at all the different ways that having this awesome broadband in the city benefits people. It's very cool, yeah.
Question really quick. Do we have like this, I mean, we can post this, but we have like some infographics that we could share with our citizens, kind of help promote you and us, and say, look how successful this is, this partnership, and things like that?
Yeah, please. We have infographics, we can work with you to customize some things, share charts and all that. We're pretty open.
I think you probably work with, for our guys, Public Works. I'd love to hear from them later, but yeah.
And I know they appreciate that we didn't microtrench all the streets, right?
Yes.
And what did you say the take rate was, right now?
She hasn't got to that yet.
Oh, you're not? Okay, I want to make sure I didn't miss it.
Jump ahead.
Okay.
We're all, we're all listening for it.
Three thousand houses, we have three thousand subscribers.
Oh, oh, hey, don't do the math, don't do the math. All right. Okay, this is Utopia generally. We are up past seventy-seven thousand subscribers across all of our cities and partnerships, which is pretty cool. You can see that just keeps growing like crazy. On a city-by-city basis, every city seems to be growing demand. We've had, I think, one or two that kind of dip, and then they come back up, and that's usually when, in fact, it's only ever been when Quantum Fiber overbuilt us and then sent door-to-door marketing, and so we lose some customers, and then after six months or so, they'll come back. So it does happen, but overall, we're doing really well. Let's see, what color are you guys? Green? You're, you're green. You're that green one, kind of in the middle there. This is more a measure of how big you are compared to other cities.
Looks like we're ahead of Linden. That's all that matters, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're your biggest, bigger city.
Yeah.
All right, here's Pleasant Grove specifics. So, you know, we did the agreement in two thousand and twenty-one. We had the system, we started activating neighborhoods and connecting customers in two thousand and twenty-two. We're pretty much done with the build in two thousand and twenty-three. Again, we love our neighbors in Lehigh, but they started a year before us. They're still not done. They're still building their network. They're way behind. So we were able, and we credit that partly with like our contractors and partners and things, but the city, too. The city has been fantastic to work with. We were able to get this thing done really quickly, which is important, because there is an obligation to this. Obviously, we issued debt, and we need to pay for that debt, and getting it built quickly and getting customers on the system quickly is, is important. Otherwise, then the city has to float basically a loan that gets paid back and all that. Anyways, we'll show you how that's all trending, but you probably already know it's going pretty well. Okay, so that was the build out of the system. Then once it was up and available across the city, this is kind of how the customers came on. So this, this is all types. This is business and residential, which is really good. Okay, this is the, this is a really important chart. So when we met with you, we said, okay, here's the structure of this thing. Utopia's gonna go issue this debt, it's actually UIA, which is kind of the financing arm of Utopia, and we're gonna have a debt obligation. And we believe that demand will be very strong, and that we'll get enough customers that, like, if it had a shortfall, it'd be worth it. I mean, we come in here and say, look, this is awesome, all the things I talked about earlier, this is worth investing in, right? But we believe the demand was so good that we could finance this thing, build it, and we'd have so many customers on it that it would completely pay for itself. And that was the plan. So the plan are the light lines. So the light line green is what we expected the customer growth to look like, and the light line that's kind of covered up in blue is the debt obligation. When we went and actually financed it, though, we usually get a little bit better terms, you know, we do agreements with some headroom in them, in case the market goes up. But the actual debt service obligation, or debt, was less than that. The actual revenues are the dark green line, so we have stayed ahead very strongly of where we needed to be to make sure there was no financial shortfall on the project. And the result is that, you know, the projects actually cost us more than this amount of money, because we have more customers than we expected by this time, but we have revenues to support debt issuances, and UIA continues to issue bonds every so often to finance new connections, and that just kind of goes in and pays for the additional debt and all that. But the city obligation will always stay at that blue amount, and you never have to worry about it. So we continue to grow the revenues beyond that, and then, then any worry or stress about ever having an impact to the city, you got a lot of buffer, right? So anyways, we love it. It's gone very, very well here. There's been no shortfall. We don't expect any shortfall, and we've got, everything points towards increasing growth and subscribers, and you guys keep developing more, which is nice, because we get more businesses, especially the stuff by the, I don't know what you call it, the freeway interchange, whatever. There's a lot of stuff down there that's been coming on. Usually don't like to show the details of subscriber maps, but we're like, and everybody and everywhere in the city pretty much has it. Zoom out enough, you're like, it's there. So red dots are residential customers, blue dots are businesses, we're like, it's, it's very popular across the city. People are signing up, and there's, it's going very well. Now, we still could use some more. I mean, it never hurts. Linden still has a higher take rate, but.
Really? Linden, what's their take rate?
They're like sixty percent, I think, so.
Wow.
It's up there.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys are like about forty, I think. I'll, I'll look at that, but what really matters is the revenues, and you're.
And we're good.
Pays the, yeah, pays the rate.
Yeah, because, I mean, if you get a business customer, then that kind of offsets what you would need residentially, whatever. It's all about how much revenue we're getting to cover the obligations. A couple updates on things. Since we started this thing, we had introduced a new two and a half gig tier that wasn't available when we started, and actually, a lot of people are signing up for that. When we connect someone with two and a half gig, we're actually installing a ten gigabit connection, so they're, they're full ten gig enabled, and if they ever decide they want that full ten gig connection, it's just a order change, and it's there. It's, it's very future-proof, ready to go at the full ten gig speed. So that's pretty cool. And we lowered their price from ten gig from when we talked originally. We continue to develop new applications, apps, and better automation for things. And then in the industry, we see a lot of new things coming out, right? With the augmented reality, virtual reality, artificial intelligence, and all of those things demand more bandwidth, more reliable internet, and lower latency, and those are all strengths of fiber over every other possible technology. So we just continue to see more and more demand. You know, it, it's easy to see people coming onto this network in this city, but if we go to a city like, let's say, West Valley City that was built a long time ago, more and more people in that city keep signing up, right? So it's not like we're adding customers just because it's new here. Demand for this is growing everywhere. So it's stronger now than it was when we were talking about this in two thousand and twenty-one, and we believe that will continue to become important to, to people to have good, reliable, and affordable broadband. This is a, a video from our fun little fire that was going on, so we captured this. So one of our smart city applications is, we like to put these cameras up that have both an optical and a thermal camera on there, and you'll see, like, as things kind of get blocked out by darkness and even the smoke, the thermal camera can tell you exactly where there are still hot spots or what's going on. This is actually a terrible location for this camera. It's, you know, we have it in Orem at Windsor Park. It's really positioned nicely for Pleasant Grove, actually, and looks at Tempanogus, and it was like, oh, there's a fire over in Provo, South Provo, so we, we steer it, like, it's a controllable one, so I turned it over at the fire to watch it over there. But in the event that we have issues near our cities in these high-risk areas, we actually have a much better view and be able to zoom in much further and evaluate the area to find hot spots and other things as a resource to our first responders and, and even the wildfire. I mean, it's more than just first responders, it's second and third response, I don't know how you describe them, but the, you know, it's an army of people that get together to fight these fires, especially on the mountainsides. And that's, this is actually publicly available, so if I were to, and this, I mean, anybody can, so this is the live view right now. Doesn't move very fast, but there's a couple spots where there's still a little bit of smoke coming off of this, and then you can see on here, like, you shouldn't have these light spots. There's a real hotspot right there, and a little one there, these areas, a couple pockets here. And, and this is, again, a pretty bad view of it. If this was on Tempanogus and we were squared up against it, like, this is kind of looking at it at the side, it'd be a lot, or very useful for identifying areas that might need a bucket drop or, you know, just some water or whatever to, or fire retardant or whatever they put on them, right? So we just like to have these things that can also be used to, we've had cities probably use them more to identify false positives, where, you know, somebody's reporting, like, there's a fire, and they pull up the camera, and they pull up on their phone and be like, nah, it's just headlights on a car or something. It seemed like having the camera would cause there to not be fires, because we're always like, we want some examples of where we actually capture fires, and it's like, man, they never show up where they have, we have these cameras. But we have them in a few different places, like Woodland Hills, Murray, South Salt Lake, Orem, Leighton, but these are all, normally, their normal mode is to be panning across the area trying to identify fires, and there's all this analysis that goes on, but when there's an actual event, then we'll focus it in on the, the location. But just kind of a cool example of what you can do with a fiber connection, I don't know I don't know what's going on with that one there. Oh, there it goes. Boy, that one needs to be zoomed in. This is up at Woodland Hills. This one probably has the fire area in view from the south. I didn't think of pointing this one at it, but.
And during hunting season, you just zoom in and.
Yeah, yeah.
Identify.
Thermal camera, the thermal camera, like, it doesn't look very good, but it's amazing what that is, right? Because it's not like optical. It's actually like every pixel is kind of like a temperature sensor, right? And and it can, anyways, I need, we need to adjust that camera. It's, the zoom levels are off. So anyways, just, you know, there's a lot of really cool things you can do when you have connectivity, right? And it doesn't cost us. This thing's running twenty-four seven, doing analysis, and it's just all there and available. Oh, I didn't bring Nicole with us. She couldn't make it today. Anyways, that's what I have for you.
So so what, I have a question. What's your right, how many outages do you have? What's your reliability of the system? It's not a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I mean, I think we all have experienced that, and I wonder if it's on my end or your end.
So in in the industry, a lot of people use terms like five nines, like ninety-nine point nine nine percent reliability. And we do achieve that across the system, and that amounts to like four minutes a year or something. But that's on average, right? Like, we'll have a fiber cut, like, we lost Woodland Hills because of Comcast. They went and cut our line twice. And so, I mean, the Woodland Hills people are not achieving five nines. But that's because, you know, of specific things going on there. But Pleasant Grove, I don't know of any major outages we've had. The road reconstruction relocate work has been challenging and expensive. You know, from UDOT, not from the city. I mean, we blame them because it was like, hey, we just built this. And they're like, okay, everything's got to be moved. And we're like, geez. But we needed to get it built and and we still are are happy that we had done it. But it is frustrating when you build a whole bunch of stuff and then have to replace it soon after. So, yeah, I think we're well above five nines of reliability statistically across the city of Pleasant Grove. I I don't think we're below that anywhere in the last year except for probably Woodland Hills. But we're actually in the process of getting a redundant route to the city so that some Comcast can't get us next time. I I mean, we hit lines too. Everybody hits lines. I mean, it's not, I I don't mean to throw them under the bus. It's just part of construction, but but it happens. But we have full redundancy to Pleasant Grove. If anything along our backbone breaks, there's a redundant route that actually goes around the other side of the lake. So there's no backbone, single point of failure, and all of the fiber huts are connected redundantly. So the only impact that can affect end users is either a fiber cut between the fiber hut and their house because there's no redundancy there. There's just one route. Or if their service provider has a problem. We can't control their systems. You know, I think FiberNet had an outage recently, and it got resolved within a few hours, but it was, they only have one place where they connect to Utopia. So when it went down, it took out all their customers. But it's highly reliable, like, top of the industry across the country, reliable.
Do you ever lose a hut for a little bit? Does the huts go down if they want to overthink themselves? I I just kind of.
It is possible. I mean, it it has happened, right? We we have redundant cooling systems. We have redundant battery arrays, so either battery array can go down. We have backup generators, so if the power goes out, you know, so it's like we have all this redundancy. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we have had problems where like the redundancy system itself fails and, you know, causes the power to go out or anything. I can't think of any time we've had a Pleasant Grove hut go down. But they have gone down and then we go, you know, send people out immediately. We have people twenty-four seven monitoring the networks and technicians available twenty-four seven in every region to to go out and solve problems. So our response rates are very good. I mean, I would I would love to say we're a hundred percent, but nobody is a hundred percent.
No. Well, thank you. I don't know if there's any other questions too, but.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the four point six out of the five Google rating, I mean, which is like really good. But if there was not, if there was a rating that wasn't, you know, the full five stars or whatnot, was there a consistent reason for that? Like, did you see like more than one reason as to why they may not have rated you the full amount? I'm just wondering if there's been like consistent issues across the board with the few that may have done that.
No, they've been kind of.
Sporadic?
Sporadic, yeah. I mean, we've had, there's been some like door-to-door sales efforts to kind of just boost our our sales in some areas. So sometimes we get complaints because someone's like, I don't like somebody showing up at my door trying to sell me.
Especially not even the service.
Right. And then sometimes it's like, you know, the the connectivity in my house, the wifi is not working very well. And we're like, well, that's that's your wifi. Get a new router, you know, like, or tell us and we'll get you someone who will help with that. Or that's the service provider's responsibility. But so there's a lot of things like that, just kind of randomly that we get hit with. And we've responded to every single one of them and try to make it better. But, you know, sometimes you just, the the rating is there and it sticks and it pulls the number down a little bit. But but it's it's still, four point six is good. We're proud of it.
So are you continuing the efforts to go door-to-door and try to get more sales or right now are you happy with where it's at?
We are never happy with where it's at.
Until you've taken over the whole city.
Honestly, like, if there's someone in the city that doesn't have the service, they're like, well, well, why? Like, we think it's awesome. Like, can we help? How, you know, what? How is there something else that's better? And if there isn't, then we want to just kind of help that person understand what it takes to to switch.
What is usually the response? Is it cost? Is it the service they already have? What what would you say?
We kind of call it inertia. That somebody doesn't want to pick up the phone and do do a thing, right? Like, they don't want to have to call and cancel Comcast. And then they're worried about somebody showing up and installing a new fiber line. And like, is that going to impact their landscaping and stuff? And and so it's really helpful, like, as people say, like, on Facebook or wherever it is, like, hey, it was actually not that bad. It was, you know, professional install and it really helped, you know, great. And they didn't mess up my rocks. Or if they broke my sprinklers, they came back and fixed them and all that. But there's just a lot of people that are like, you know, I know I should cancel my Comcast and switch, but I'll do it next month. And then next month becomes three years and they're still paying too much. But but if it's just like, is there something that the other options are beating us on? There's not. Like, everyone can get just as good a video service and better internet and phone and the pricing and reliability is all better with Utopia. They just have to do it. Like, there there isn't a competitive reason to not get it.
Okay.
I'm going to say amen to that. I look forward to that day when I called Comcast and canceled. And I'll I'll say your customer service was awesome. And then I use TelePop, but, I mean, they helped me get a new mesh system. It's been perfect. It's been good. So I'm happy with that. I like, unless you have another, I like to see our Public Works director come up and talk to us about how happy they are. That's all.
I didn't have a question. I just, my natural instinct is to argue, so I was going to say something, but I'm not now.
Yeah, you talked about the micro trenching and the road work. Let's just start there. They came in and pretty much hit nearly every yard in the city. And when we're in front of it, whether it was underground and whether it was in front. And as a partner, we took those calls at Public Works. And it was a really good relationship with their contractor. And it starts at the top, right? And and so if we had an issue, they would come out and fix it immediately. And if I have an issue even today with anything that was done three years ago, the contractor, the subcontractor, whatever, we make one phone call to a contact that's been made available to us. And they say, where is the address? And we'll go fix it. And that's the only call I make. And that's pretty rare for working with utilities, I'll tell you for sure. And and we probably can't blame UDOT for all of the relocates. That was nice of you to do so. But I'll I'll just comment, when we have had our road widening projects and and they literally probably months or or, yeah, u- under a year got done finishing and installing, we would call and say, this is in the way. And they were one of the best groups with whom to work with in the installation. So the the concern that that they were going to dig up all of our roads and everything, I think that so far, the performance is just on the roads themselves. You know, there's there's little things that come up and we, like I say, we call and and make that happen. On the service end, we've been super happy. You you talk about a smart city, and and I'll call it a smart application for us. We have connected all of our water sites with Utopia Fiber in the city. Well, I shouldn't say all of them because we have some that aren't in our city. We have some in Cedar Hills that are not connected, and we wish we had that data. And I won't show you our cameras because they're security cameras. But eventually, we're going to bring Drew over here and we're going to show you the SCADA system that brings all that information back in real time, and and it's been awesome to work with. Also, at Cook Family Park, we ran a service in there, Utopia Service. That's what all that security. And we would not be able to run those images in the time that we can without that level of service at all. I mean, images and 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 video take so much bandwidth. And so it's been a great thing for our city to have Utopia and those connections. And as a resident myself, I was on one of those shared ends. And I couldn't stream an online meeting at my home until I I hope I was one of the first customers in my area. And and it's been a hundred percent reliable for me. So anyway, that's, and I, I'll tell you, I'm more of a Utopia convert because I was associated with one of those first cities that that had some rough starts. And and it it wasn't always easy. And and the conversations weren't always easy, so.
Thanks, Dan.
That's my report.
So any other questions for Utopia?
We're open to constructive criticism.
No, no, I love, I have a Utopia. I've had it probably half a dozen times where it's gone down. And then seems like something happens overnight and then it comes back. But I I plug my my computer hardwired into the modem and it still is down. And I'll, and I don't know what that is.
That's not normal. There's something going on.
Probably. It's Sumo. Sumo is our service provider, so.
So Sumo is reliable.
Yeah, I like Sumo.
So there's something else going on. We, let's follow up and maybe we can put something on there to watch the connection specifically and see if we can see anything on our side.
Okay, yeah.
Sometimes it's refreshing. Mine's gone out a couple of times on me. I don't know if it's the provider or whatever. And 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 we said, well, we're going to do something different tonight, okay? It's just not we do.
Like, no, no, that's not what we want to hear.
You break, break down the skipper.
And it's kind of like, sometimes my wife will say, you 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 bringing Sally to bed with you tonight? That's my computer, you know? So anyway, and I says, well, I got some, I got some things I got to do, you know? So if, when you don't have the internet, man, you think, okay, other things go on.
Yeah, it's probably healthy for all of us to to disconnect a little bit, but it shouldn't be because of us. We we don't want to be the reason.
We ought to go offline every once in a while. But anyway, I just want to let you know that the two providers we had really before you guys hit town, they wrote off our city years ago on spending money here because they just didn't want to do it. And and they really, and they had big plans, but then they, their budgets got cut. And and then we finally got something that's got some, and I've had both of the providers in the past. And I am so thrilled with what we have now. And our citizens have to be too, because they don't, if they, if they're not, they don't know what we suffered through. And I mean, geez, we just will go back to the dial-up days, you know, over the copper. So anyway, so, anyway, thank you for what you're doing for our city and our community.
The feeling is mutual. We really appreciate the partnership and your trust in us. And and it's, we're very happy with with how things have gone as well. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And I thank the council for making the decision that, hey, we're going to do this. We're going to stick our neck out and we're going to go with these guys because they're going to make it work. So anyway, so. All right, we, let's start with Chief Brown back in the back there. We'll we'll move right on to the time we have left for our staff reports here. Boy, bad day yesterday, chief.
It's a bad day. Really tough week, and next week will be challenging as well. But mayor and council, other than the report that I sent yesterday, I mean, that's kind of the gist of what's been going on here. We're in the process of trying to hire for a couple of positions, a full-time officer and probably two reserve officers. We should be hiring our two part-time records people within the week, ten days, have them up and running. So we're just looking for some people right now and navigating stuff day by day. I mean, is what it is. So we'll just carry on.
Okay.
That's all I have. Any questions?
We just never know. Thank you, chief.
Stay safe.
It was a domestic, and when you read the reports weekly that he sends us, it's like eighty percent of all the calls are domestics and.
So we.
I'm just terrified.
Never know. Dion.
Mayor and council, I really don't have a lot. We've lost all of our seasonal help, so it's all on us now. So it's the full-time guys. We have one seasonal that's still stuck around for to help with diamonds and soccer. And we have one that's helping with the Cook Park. But other than that, we've, we've sent everybody back to school. All our college students went back this year, so.
Has it died down, I'm assuming, quite a bit at Cook Park with school in?
Daytime, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, as soon as school's out.
But then they kind of come after school?
As soon as school's out. It's a little more refreshing, I think, for the young mothers with the little kids during the day.
Yeah.
When it's since they're in school. But, yeah, it picks right back up as soon as school's out. So it's great to have and it's well-used, so. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you're going to hate me for asking this question.
It's the Discovery Park playground surface. Have we ever heard back from them?
Yeah, funny, you should ask. I sent a really nice email that really wasn't nice on Thursday of last week. I was going to CC Tina, but I figured it'd probably be better not because she'll be the next email that goes out. He actually emailed me today, right before executive staff. And they're planning on the twenty-fifth of September to come in and redo that. So we'll we'll see. This is how many times that we've had this done.
For for the playground surface?
For, yeah, Discovery.
What about the courts there? When are we planning resurfacing that?
We're still working with the contractor and things, trying to come to a resolution on what we want to do there, so.
What are the options?
Well, let's not talk about them in here because it may be some legal stuff we're talking about.
Will we be able to be looped in at some point?
Absolutely. Yeah, probably within the next month, you'll be looped in, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, I think the playground surface has been an issue for a long time, and they've made a lot of commitments to come and go, and they just never met them. So if we need to put a little more pressure on them in other ways, I think we would be in favor of that.
We have a ten-year warranty on the product. We're in year seven. But we've had this issue. They've come in a couple of times and patched some little things, but they've never resurfaced. His email today was they were going to resurface, so we'll see. Hopefully, the weather and everything works out. We're getting into that timeframe where we're starting to get cooler temperatures. But but I I think we'll be all right as far as the temperatures go. It's just getting them here and getting them to do it. So this was my last straw with them. That's what I referred to in the email. And then it's going to our, it'll go to Tina, so.
I mean, you've been plenty of patient with them, so I think it's time for them to.
So hopefully, they'll get in and get it done. New surface, and that'll last us another five or six years or three or four years before we resurface again, the the top coat. It's about every two, three to four year that we have to redo that very top coat. So part of our program with Cook Park is the contractor will come in next spring and do a surface or resurface. And that should last us three or four more years, and then we'll have to resurface the top coat again. So depending on the use, and if you go out there and you look around all your slides where there's impact, those are your areas that are really getting eaten up right now. There's just so much use on those areas. So those will be the ones that we'll definitely need to repair.
Okay, thanks, Dion. You know, Megan, I I I see where you're at, but then the chief comes in and he just blocks you out. So would you come forward and? You're you're just an easy person to hide.
I don't mind hiding sometimes. Does it, do we have the dongle, the doggo, whatever the thing is?
And between you and Dion, I mean, the last two Saturdays at Cook Park, oh my heavens. Especially this last Saturday, what a, what a group of people. So great to see all those people enjoying that beautiful grass there.
Yeah, yeah, we're, it's busy. We've right, we've got our fall sports up and happening there at. Yeah, yeah, we're, it's busy. We've got our fall sports up and happening there at Cook Park, which is fun. It's fun to be at that facility and be in this brand-new space, so. Yeah, it's cool. It's awesome. It's a really good, good addition to what we have. And it's nice to have kind of everything all in one place and all together. It's easier for our staff, so it's been really nice.
Yeah, my daughter played down there last weekend for the first game.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of stuff going on and plenty of parking, which was nice.
That's good. I didn't, I actually hadn't even heard anything about parking, so it sounds like that's gone well.
It seemed like it was good.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we've had a little bumps just in the transition to be at a new location, but we've worked through those things and I think it's going to be really great, so. I have two videos for you today. This is our foam party that we ended up combining with BYU. And BYU said this was their best partnership in this, I don't remember what they call it. They bring in the mascot and do all sorts of things, so. That's, so this happened earlier this summer, but we just got the video on this, so let's see. Hopefully, our sound works on this. So, that was a fun foam party. I think, I think the Parks Department hates the foam party on the grass, so sorry, Dion. I know they're like, oh, this is the worst thing, but everybody has a really good time.
And what BYU calls that is like getting new recruit party.
Yeah, and they just, they come in for free. I mean, we don't pay them, right? And they come in and do all that, have the mascot, have. Yeah, see, that's so cute. That's so fun. So, that's a fun event. Yeah, we super enjoy that one. It's, and it's growing. It just started two years ago with our summer birthday party and just was small and it got bigger last year. Now, we've combined with BYU, so it's fun to see things grow like that. This other one here is summer bration, so this has just happened just a couple of weeks ago.
Great.
Well done.
I mean, we're lucky. We've got Chris Fox, who I've talked about before, that puts these videos together, which has been really awesome. I think probably some of our next steps is trying to get them at some of our, I mean, these tend to be the events that we're showing off and marketing and making sure people see, but we got a lot of opportunity to show what we're doing day-to-day. Yeah, like, I mean, fitness and all the sports and the enrichments and all those things that are happening. Also, I just want to throw out a couple of huge thank yous. I mean, so the library was involved with summer bration, so thanks to the library. The fire department came and helped us clean the building when we did our annual cleaning. The Parks Department's been huge in helping all the fall sports and all these events happening, so. I mean, we're lucky. We work with some really cool people and they're really great crews in all of the departments and all make this happen. So, so anyway, good stuff.
You probably had the best judges ever at summer.
I, we did have probably the best judges we've ever had at summer bration, that's right.
That was hard. That was hard.
It was hard. I have a cute little five-year-old.
And you're telling them, no, I don't like that.
I hate being judges for anything. It's the worst job ever, so. But, yeah, so those are some things that have just recently happened and we have Viking Day that'll come up in October, so working on that. And then, you know, we're, soccer starts, like, football starts in a few weeks, all the things, so keep it busy.
How's the grass going to hold up this fall?
Dion, you probably have a better answer to that. How do you feel the grass is doing so far? Okay, so, yeah, we had a spike ball tournament this, this last Saturday. It was actually a national tournament that was there at Cook Park on Saturday. So, that is a rough sport on, so we, that should not be a consistent thing, if anything, maybe once a year, but. But otherwise, I think, I think we've got enough space and it's spread out well. So, they were partnering with us, so we did a partner with them, so we didn't charge them for that, so we, they worked with us on that. But, but, yeah, so anyway, it's been, been a busy summer and here we go into the fall. And pools open for a couple more weeks. We have aquatics for a couple more weeks and then another round of winter, so. Okay, anything, any questions for me?
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Chief, why don't you give us an update on the fires that are all going on? And also, I got a question for you. What made the line drop on State Street there where we had the big outage with Rocky Mountain there? Do you know what caused that line to come down?
So, yeah, so it had a little, I don't call it a microburst, but a little kind of front came through here, kind of windy, just for a few minutes. I don't know, ten, fifteen minutes, but over on the 411 East State side, they got a pretty good-sized tree over there. One of the, well, it was tracking, but a branch broke on top of that, landed on top, top two lines on that side, on the east side of the street, wound that line up, fell down, broken line, sparked the transformer just south or north of that, went across State Street, sparked the transformer and brought down two more lines that went across the road.
Wow.
It was a weird deal because by the time I got down there, you know, it was calm, no wind, nothing. And we waited for probably an hour and a half before the power company could get enough people there to get stuff turned off and make sure that line was not charged. And it was not energized, but the guy's like, hey, it's not, it's not grounded, so don't get near it. It's like, we're not going to get near it. I'm not electricity guy. I'm going to stay away from it, so, yeah, that's kind of what it was.
Yeah, that was, when we lose that many stoplights, I was late for my mag meeting by thirty minutes. I mean, it was just, you just came to a standstill out there.
It was, it was crazy and, yeah, it was hard to do anything, but, yeah, so that's kind of what it was.
I couldn't, I couldn't see where anybody hit a pole, so anyway.
Yeah, it was, no, we had like three or four calls, people really concerned because they saw sparks. They saw flashes coming from the poles and all kinds of stuff, so that's kind of, kind of what it was, though. But, nothing too serious, just a, and it wasn't a very branch too. It was kind of a smaller branch, but what do you do? Fire department's going good, just busy. Calls keep going up. We're kind of just moving along. Our crews came back from Monroe Fire, got back Saturday, did real well. They're doing some rehab. They want to get back on the board again and get out this week if they can, so there's that possibility. They've been, just, I mean, it's been one of those years where every which way you turn, somebody's burning. Montana's burning, Idaho's burning, everyone's burning around us. And, I mean, you've got the one down in Provo, so it's, it's going, going every which way. We're just keeping busy. We're still fully staffed, going good. We have some of our guys that are up in Thistle this weekend. The acronym, it's the company's called LETSI. I can't think of what it is, but it's a firearm training that they get to go to. And being that Colby Draney is going to go to post this next little bit, they get the opportunity to go up here at this company. We supply them an ambulance and our three medics on the SWAT team are up there. But they get the opportunity to shoot up to thousands of rounds this week, going through scenarios and doing different things, becoming very familiar with their equipment they have and how things run. So, it's a good opportunity. They don't charge us anything, but it's roughly like twenty-five hundred dollars a student to run through. So, we come out there, it's not really paying anything, but getting some real good training out of it for our SWAT medics that are on the county team, so it's really good for us. And then we just have planned this next little while, just a bunch of trainings with Alpine, with our Alps group, with American Fork, Lehigh, Lone Peak. We'll be doing that. There'll be a few things that I may invite some of you guys. I'll put it out to you guys, some training opportunities, some fire drill or fire, live fire training that we may do over in American Fork. So, I may ask you guys, if anybody wants to, I'll just put it out to you guys and see if you want to come check it out and see what we do and things like that. But other than that, everything's going great, just moving along, keeping busy, so.
Any questions for the chief? Thanks, Chief. With that, we're out of time for our day. We'll catch up with the rest of the directors after our, you know, regular council meeting at the end there, so I asked for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second.
We have a motion from, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll adjourn till.